Everybody, at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And at this time, Robbie Hollenworth, would you give us some indication in the place?
Let us pray. Lord, I want to thank you for this day and thank you for all the things you've done for us. First of all, I want to thank you and everyone else for all the sheriff deputies and police officers we have in this county. They had an incident yesterday and people don't realize a lot of times with that job, you can die any day. And I just want to thank you for protecting them, putting your hedge of protection over them. It means a lot to us and, you know, all the people in this county. We need to keep our counties safe. I want to pray for all the men overseas that are protecting us. I want to pray for this country that with the new president, we can all get together and we can do things like they ought to be done and take care of this country. And I want to thank you for the ladies that are here from FFA. It gives you a good feeling that you've got your hands on them and making sure that we have good children coming up in today's society. And I want to thank you for these commissioners up here that make decisions every day that people don't like some of them, some of them they do, and we're not perfect, but we do the best we can. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Staff, is there any additions or deletions?
Yes, sir. There are several. We have a DOT contract amendment for mosquito control budget. We have a modification subgrant agreement to Florida Commerce to extend the time on the housing program. We've got the elimination of the local state of emergency. And then the county engineer gave us one for modifying a contract from one way into a reimbursement agreement.
And David, you'll address these right after your last presentation on the agenda.
Kevin will address the ones that are in the DOT and, yeah, the mosquito stuff.
All right, okay. All right, you got that. Okay, and before we go into it real quick, we're gonna, as I mentioned last meeting, we're gonna be gliding into some changes. Link or IT guys working on a couple issues about maybe relocating the podium. But at this time, if you would, because what we're trying to alleviate is congregations and people coming up during the call meeting in the middle here. So anybody on that side that may want to speak on an issue in front of Mr. Kirby, he's got the cards down there and they will pass them down. And the sheriff's deputy down here, if somebody walks up that way, the cards are down here and he'll have them passed down here. But what we're trying to alleviate is people coming and approaching at this point. And of course, you can notice the clerk, she's not the new commissioner, but the clerk, we moved her because us country boys are kind of slurry with our voices and we're trying to make where she can, she doesn't have to sit and listen to recorder as much when she's trying to redo the minutes. So thank you for everybody for your cooperation. So with that being said, I seek a motion to approval of the agenda as presented.
So move.
Got a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. One of my specialties or favorites, I guess I'll say, I got a proclamation here, 2025P dash zero four proclamation by the Columbia County Board of Commissioners designating the week February 17th through February 22nd, 2025 as National FFA Organization Week in Columbia County. Whereas Columbia County has rich heritage in agriculture and whereas the National FFA Organization has presence in Columbia County for the past 90 years. And whereas National FFA Organization provides a strong foundation for the youth of Columbia County and the future of food, fiber, natural resource systems. Whereas National FFA Organization promotes leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members. And whereas agricultural education at the National FFA Organization ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet growing demands of science, business, and technology of agricultural end. Whereas the National FFA Organization motto, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, live to serve, gives direction, a purpose, to those students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education end. Whereas the National FFA Organization promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Now therefore Columbia County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim this week, February 17th, 22nd, 2025, as National FFA Organizational Week in Columbia County, Florida. Proclaim this sixth day of February 2025. That's Jane Swisher and Chairman Tim Murphy. And Stephen, ladies, who's the president? I'm sure the FFA's got something to educate us with.
Good morning. On behalf of all FFA chapters in Columbia County, we, the Columbia County Farm Bureau Leadership Academy, would like to thank you, our Board of County Commissioners, for the opportunity to be involved in the county government process, bring awareness of our organization, and to the agricultural producers of Columbia County.
According to a report from the University of Florida Food and Resource Economics Department, agriculture and related industries have a direct impact on Columbia County of over $308 million. Agriculture creates over 6,000 jobs in the area and comprises 14% of gross county regional product. There are 979 farms in Columbia County which total more than 107,000 acres of agricultural production.
We will all agree, these numbers are very impressive, and they send a message that we all should be striving to protect our interests in agriculture. Columbia County farmers and ranchers continue in their efforts to strengthen our communities economically, as well as through the educational process by providing guidance to those of us who are members of the FFA.
The National FFA Organization is dedicated to making a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agricultural education.
Each year, National FFA Week is recognized across this great nation of ours during the month of February. This year, we celebrate the event February 17th through the 22nd in honor of this national event. It is our desire to petition our county government for the opportunity to fly the FFA flag under our nation's flag at the Columbia County Courthouse during this time period.
By allowing us this opportunity, we will be able to bring awareness of this national youth organization who teaches its members to live by the motto of learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve. Thank you.
There we go. Any of y'all like to say anything, you all just stay there and stay there for a minute. I make a motion, I make a motion that the FFA fly their flag during the week of their, we could just say 17th, yeah. Got this motion.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes, come take a picture, please. Just while we're getting here, March the 18th, FFA group, Mr. Stephen Dixon, the whole clan, they'll be in Tallahassee, they're supposed to be over there. Yeah, I've never attended it. It's something to see. I think they came over there with us last year, Rocky. And if you got time, it'd be a great thing to do, and we appreciate what's going on here. Just to point out, where's the, so Edgely Mama there, she's used to be my canoe partner, now she's the FFA mom. Okay, he got the flag, right?
Yeah, we got the flag.
Okay, before we move forward, I ask a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
So move.
Thank you. Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of this consent agenda.
So move.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve it, or adopt the consent agenda.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Kirby.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This morning, I'd like to start off down at Rum Island. The University of Florida wants to conduct a survey, it's an anonymous survey, basically to learn about travel patterns, spending habits, spending habits and preferences. Therefore, I'm requesting a motion to approve you have to conduct surveys at Rum Island Park.
So move.
Thank you. Got a motion, in the second. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Kirby, can we get that data after they do the surveys?
Absolutely. Once again, the purpose, when I say anonymous, it's anonymous, the survey itself, we will be receiving the data.
They'll give us.
Yes, sir. Okay. The next is down in Fort White. So if you recall, back in January of '23, we modified our Waste Pro Solid Waste Collection Contract to accommodate the needs of the town of Fort White. Since then, we've roughly paid them $5,600 franchise fees. In June 1 of '24, this board unanimously terminated an interlocal agreement with the town to end September of '24. We do currently owe them $1,629.42. And I believe we do owe them that. But based on the vote in the interlocal, it's my opinion that once we square up the franchise fees end, we're doing the paperwork, we're doing the RFQ, we're doing everything internally. So I'm requesting a motion to eliminate the franchise fees as a result of the elimination of the interlocal.
So move. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed.
Thank you. So back in June of '24, if you recall, we received one bid on a resurfacing project that starts at Faith Road on Baskin Norris and goes to State Road 47. This is the piece that's between the ball fields. We all know it needs repaving. We also know that we've discussed the need for ultimately a two-lane to four-lane conversion. This is your intermediate step. If you will recall, the bids come in, in my opinion, higher than expected. We discussed what can we do about that. So bottom line is, I went and negotiated with the contractor and allowed them more flexible work hours at night, things of that nature, instead of the traditional work hour. Contractor did agree to reduce their maintenance of traffic line item by $75,000. So that being said, this turns you loose to repave Baskin Norris, requesting a motion to award bid number 2024-07 to Anderson Columbia Company and to approve construction agreement in the amount of $2.75040409 for the above mentioned project.
Kevin, I have one question about that. Now, it says we're gonna go from 47 to Faith Road.
Right.
Do you know, team, don't do the other little part right there and redo the intersection on Bradford Highway or 247? Is that correct?
Mr. Ford, if you'll recall, we do a five-year installment of $250,000 annual.
Right.
We are almost near a completion of that for our contribution to that project. The reason the project stops at Faith Road, there's some alignment issues and whatnot to transition into, will be the expansion of 247 itself in that intersection. So in an effort to allow the transition, that's why we stopped the project at Faith, where it can all line up properly. That will be your next phase of improvements to Baskin Norris 247. That construction will start at the I-75 overpass, go to the bowling alley, then back towards the fairgrounds, and back to Faith Road. That'll be what I call Phase Two after we do this phase.
In Phase Two, that's when they'll dig the retention ponds off.
That is correct. That'll be Phase Two. And then your ultimate phase, as I indicated earlier, we just started the acquisition of property, do a two-lane to four-lane expansion on Baskin Norris ultimately. Got it?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid number 2024-07.
Second and third.
All in favor say aye. All opposed. Kevin, real quick, on that there, on our part of defense, leading up to that, once you know the drop dead date on it, can we maybe go a little bit over and above, giving people notice, you know, because we all know, your phone's gonna, you might need to change phone number, okay? Because you know what's gonna happen there.
So, Commissioner Hollenworth, you asked me the day, does this answer your question? Okay, so to go with that.
I don't know why they're calling me. I sent them to Tim.
You're the one, huh?
When I said negotiated, that's exactly right. We're gonna put a lot of advance, what we call variable message boards, because we're gonna be working at night, extended hours because of the traffic volume. And that, the contractor, that was his concern, the reason the numbers come in so high. As some of y'all may know, we were called back when we originally constructed that road. I built it the first time, it was us. Said we could play marbles in the middle of that road. But that's simply not the case if you drive down there. Yes, sir, we're gonna take some extra.
So is that the busiest road in Columbia County right now?
Countywide, county, yes.
Countywide, yeah, that's what I thought. Probably the busiest road in any county within 30, 40 miles, county road.
And the, Kevin, the proposed project, we know the ones coming across from the girls there, the one behind the social security building, is it moving forward to your knowledge? Or, I mean, will they be blending their turn lane, would be necessary?
No, sir. I spoke with a proposed developer about that, actually over the weekend. And they're in the very infant stages of that. What is inclusive of this project is the roughly $500,000 worth of turn lanes there at the 300 door development. And they did escrow their 485, $500,000 into this current project. So that will be captured within this project.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I've asked you one more question, just to ball apart within a few months. When will this, this project begin?
So the way the process works, Commissioner, is once you guys do what you did here this morning, we would do what we call a contract exchange. That takes a little bit. Once everybody signs contracts on their side, gets back to our side, then you issue a 14-day notice to proceed. That's how you govern your jobs. Now, because we negotiated with a $75,000 reduction, we also negotiated the timeframe to do the project. So I always, that's the only way we govern. We cannot tell the contractor when to start. We govern it with days, subject to what we call liquidated damages if not done timely.
You give him an end date.
The reason I postponed this through the winter, because you have to have minimum temperatures to work with asphalt. Reason I come back in the spring, because I can work at some at night, and I didn't want to get into all that, not enough temperature work. That's the reason the delay was through the winter time. Okay?
So it can be a couple, three months.
Yes, sir. I would logically think you'll start in the, here in a month or so, logically think that. But I think my goal is to button up or school guns back in traffic. That's my goal.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, we good on that?
Yep.
Okay. So, Mr. Kraus and I, kind of talking about the spring. He and I met at length over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, we're growing. We're growing at a rapid rate. So we felt obligated to kind of give you guys an update of where we're at on making some positive changes. So we will start with the tourist development department. So we have successfully hired a marketing person. They are interviewing today as it relates to an office manager. Of course, Clint Pittman is serving as our interim director. Once we go through this phase of, we got the marketing person on board, we've got the office manager trying to work that out today. We'll then pursue a permanent director, and Clint has graciously volunteered to continue serving as interim. We feel that's fine. What is the new position that we got on our mind? PO, Public Information Officer. We're not talking about a part-time person. We're talking about a real PO. Mr. Hollenworth and I have had lengthy discussion about this. I think even myself has recognized the fact of modern times. We are of the opinion.
He was a hard case to crack. Social media.
Hey, Robbie, you're welcome.
Robbie out of business.
At the end of the day, that's probably the newest thing, would not really decide up where to fold that into. But you will be hearing us in the immediate future discussing a full-time PO person. We are blessed to know that our county attorney actually has a huge background of things of that kind of nature, and he's got a lot of input. But we have recognized we need somebody, whether it be an announcement of rezoning, always, forget the state's emergency, we're talking about at all times. We want that go-to person that gets out there with all 16, 17 departments and puts the information out there as needed. So that's a significant change there. Okay. Moving on down to emergency management. We obviously had a very heavy storm season last year. If there was any sword of silver lining to the storms we experienced last year, we did learn where we have room for improvement on how we respond to storms. Our response was better than most, and our cleanup was about as good as it can be. But you will remember that before and during the storms, it has issues with coordination of services and materials. We have a full-time emergency management director. He has no staff and is really situated in the department that does not have a staff. This means he doesn't really have folks to command. And what he mostly does is keep us informed of things, stay in touch with Tallahassee, or making sure we get reimbursement expenses, bring in outside agencies, and other administrative functions. He's really not set up to mobilize people and materials to go out of county where the board desired in the last storms. So we're gonna have a very fairly extensive workshop this spring in the immediate future, go through how we prepare for the storms, how we deal with storms, and how we clean up thereafter. We want to make sure emergency management is working within a department, with an organizational structure, so when the director needs help, he has folks within his department who can provide it. And of course, public work will always continue to do with the heavy lifting. We are proposing that emergency management be situated within the fire rescue department, effective immediately. This will allow our director and fire chief and the staff within the fire department to go ahead and start preparing for the workshop, be ready to implement any changes that come through that. We've discussed this issue at length, and all of the options, this makes the most sense of coming storm season and beyond. So with that, I would like to request a motion, Mr. Chair. Emergency Management Director be assigned to Columbia County Fire Rescue to work under Chief Crawford.
Now, Kevin, how about donation?
I'll get there in a minute.
Oh, okay. So you want to do separate motions?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, a related matter. Most of you will remember that during last year's storms, I was put in charge of the logistical side of things. When the board became concerned, we were not getting materials and supplies as fast as our constituents desired. We ordered tarts and water and ice, brought those supplies to the county so we would have them available as we went along. After the storms were over, however, we did end up with a lot of, a large amount of unused supplies, including a significant amount of ice. Because of how the department's structured, it appears that for a couple of months, no one recognized there was this ice, this leftover ice. But the county, the county was continuing to hold it in cold storage out on US 90 East. When I learned of this a couple of weeks ago, that we still had this ice, we set making sure we could put it to use. We have worked it out with the Department of Ag that holding this ice for the next storm is okay. Learn more about ice than ever cared to learn about. Once you keep it at ambient temperature, you don't let it thaw, you wrap it in some kind of stuff, it's shelf lifeless. It will not perish unless we allow it to melt. Till the next storm, we might need to distribute the ice. We can still sell it or donate to other agencies or nonprofits that have a need. This morning, I'm requesting that we donate one load of ice valued at $12,800 to the Florida Sheriff's Association Board Ranch in Swan Lake County. They have to do an event coming up. Would like to use this. So I'm requesting a motion to donate one load of ice to Swan Lake County.
Okay, before we go there, Baker County reached out to me last night, talked to Mr. Chuck Brown, our representative, and a few others. They've got the Battle of Illustia project coming up. We already, correct, Kevin, provide firewood for that and what have you. It's my understanding that they may reach out to us for some set amount of ice for the Illustia Festival that takes place in Baker County. And if it's the board's, right, I'd like to add that into the motion if it's not stepping out.
Mr. Chair, let me validate about the wood. For every Illustia, we cut dump truck loads of wood for that, several dump truck loads. I think that would be much common sense that I could go along with that.
I'll add that to my motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Thank you.
And kind of end that, Mr. Chair, members of the board, going forward with the reorganization of emergency management, we feel confident. We will not only be able to get on top of these supplies on the front end, but we will be better to use them up or share them with other agencies on the back end. Okay? And I will be coming back in a real near future, kicked it off last week, with a real hurricane workshop. But this is not something I'm gonna be asking for for 30 minutes before a board meeting, on a block off a window.
Yeah.
What our goal is in calm waters, you got the operational side of things, you got the logistical side of things. Calm waters, the operational side of things, we have a checkbox. We're gonna present that. Form a team, we're gonna build a checkbox on the logistical side of things. We're gonna have a workshop. We all share ideas. I'm sure it needs modification. We'll go through that entire checkbox, whether it takes one hour or three. And then logistical side of things, we'll have the same things, the operational side of things, vice versa. Right? My goal is, just like we do on the operational side, let's talk about the little ice storm that we're leaving alone. The ice storm hit on a Tuesday night, a few weeks ago. Sunday before Tuesday night, and the next day was a holiday. I called the chair out of courtesy because he's gonna see people working all the time. I didn't think twice about, hey, guys, it's got little sand trucks, let's go hit all 31 bridge decks. We mobilized daylight Monday morning. We paid double time and a half. That's what we do. But we have check boxes. We check box, let's replenish the sand that we use, let's get rid of the sand truck, let's do all of this stuff. That's our goal in the workshop. Let's clean up logistical side of things. That way, the thought is, is when the hurricane or whatever comes next on our path, yes, sir, we're ready.
And I guess we'll do this in the workshop, but I think we can make it to where there's not a whole lot of discussion. We've got a certain time when we shut down this or shut down that or bring this about, you know what I mean? So that, so that you don't have to come and talk to us about it. When you see a certain number of whatever happening, you can check it off and it's over. Or it's, or it starts, you know what I mean? I think it, you're trying to streamline it where we don't have to have a meeting every.
You heard me use the term calm waters.
Right, right.
In calm waters.
It's hard, it's hard, whatever, yeah.
Criteria, including the PO, including the PO, here's how we're gonna do this, whatever it is. You've got it on the operational side. We're gonna determine how many community centers we're gonna use, how many bathrooms we're gonna use, how many shelters we're gonna use, that kind of stuff. Are we gonna do tarts, MREs, water, ice, whatever we decide upon.
And when we all come to those storm meetings, we need to stick by that.
There you go.
Stick by that.
The goal is, is to plan your work, work your plan, and try not to deviate off whatever you decide. Okay?
Good deal.
Mr. Chair, my final thing is a time-sensitive issue. We received this letter the day before yesterday, and we can only do it if we capture it prior to February 14th. Obviously, you do not have another board meeting between then and now, now and then. So the Department of Ag is basically wanting to give us another $1,984.67 to accompany our mosquito control efforts. I'm requesting a motion to say grace over that.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Before I start, I'm going to basically let Joel do the one item that he was going to talk about, which is the contract reimbursement that the county engineer had sent us wanting to revise those contracts. That was one of the walk-ons.
That was the additional.
One of the additions.
The additions, correct.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The D O T reached out to the county engineer back in November, October and November of twenty-four. You approved a grant agreement. And the way it was set up was as a state-funded grant agreement with D O T to fund a lot of the improvements in Ellisville, a lot of the utility improvements, a lot of the surface, a lot of the paving improvements. D O T has now come back in the eleventh hour and said, hey, we can't actually give you any money because that's not the right title to the agreement, literally. So the amendment you have there changes it from a state-funded grant agreement to a reimbursement agreement, which is what it was always intended to be. The original agenda items even referenced it as a reimbursement agreement. We literally just filled it out on the wrong form. This is classic government stuff. So the amendment changes the title and then takes out the parts that are relevant to a state-funded grant agreement. Everything else is exactly the same, same amounts of money, same projects, same scope. I do recommend approval of the amendment. So again, D O T can move forward with the projects and we can keep them properly funded.
Okay. Any questions?
If I understand it right, so basically it's, it's a reimbursement grant, just like we always.
It was always a reimbursement. They gave us the forms for the state-funded grant, which is where the state directly pays for everything. That's not what they're doing. It's always intended to be reimbursement. So for them to make sure they stay in the good graces of whoever cuts their checks, they had to get this fixed.
Kevin, you're okay with this? I mean, it's, I know you've been working hard on that project down there.
We don't want to let that get off track.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, it's a housekeeping issue. You have multiple funding agencies. And Joel, you hit it the best way. This is typical government stuff. This is just a house clean, the red tape issue.
Kevin, on the reimbursement aspect of a project like this, as other scraps got, what have, who in house is taking care of the reimbursement paperwork?
So, with a project of this size, to give you a quick history lesson, well, we identified the need for improvements at Ellisville, Florida. You have to start off putting a conceptual plan together. Our senior partner, F Dot, assisted us with that, which is inclusive of a signalized intersection down south of seventy-five, the construction of a quadrant road, the vacating of an existing dirt grade, relocation of that dirt grade, and realignment and redoing what we call Howell Road today. A lot of moving parts. So I took the front end of it, acquired property, meet with D O T, took about fourteen, fifteen months to put that puzzle together. That therefore allows you to get position to be eligible for these funding mechanisms. The D O T did the heavy lifting with me begging. At some point, we wound up got about twenty-five million dollars worth of various grants, what Joel was referring to this morning, even on their side, crossing these dotted lines to make sure this puzzle comes all together. So with a long answer, as with any project, I kicked it off. Now I'll turn it over to our engineering department, right? They'll put this puzzle together. It'll then go to construction, that'd be the Coates and the Jakes the world, and it'll come back with Chad and I to close it out paperwork.
Okay, okay.
So, in terms of filing the paperwork, the people that are in the field know when they hit the milestones and know when to do the paperwork.
So, so how does a motion need to be worded?
Just to approve the amendment.
Just to approve the amendment?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion, we approve the amendment.
Second motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
First thing I have is relatively easy. Last meeting, I believe it was, you approved the lease, a quarter of an acre to Cox Communication or Cox Comm. Put in the terminal hub for their fiber operations on County Road eighteen by the fire station. They're asking for just an agreement that allows them to go on the property prior to the final execution of the lease, so that they can do the survey and get that in the lease and then any other due diligence they may have. Been reviewed by the attorney. It just protects us.
Motion to approve this site for Cox Comm.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next one is the Public Internet Service Agreement. Every year, we try and get the E rate from the state so that, you know, it saves us ninety percent on the cost of internet service that the library provides to our public. We want to switch to A T and T. It's been reviewed by the attorney. It's been reviewed by the I T department. This is a better deal for us. And so we're asking you to approve the agreement for the Public Internet Service with A T and T.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. David Dust, for the record, myself and Stash and some other volunteers, we got a meeting this afternoon at one o'clock with Comcast while we're on the internet subject. And hopefully, next meeting, might be able to come with some updates of where the possible constructions, projects may take place. We'll see. Thank you.
So the next item is the interlocal agreement with the city of Lake City for the operation of North Florida Mega Industrial Parks wastewater treatment plant. First thing I want to say in paragraph ten, and I believe in paragraph thirteen, there are typos. I got you a clean copy that I distributed. It refers to the N F W U A when it should have referred to the N F M I P. So in other words, they, instead of saying North Florida Mega Industrial Park, they accidentally said the North Florida Water Utility Authority. The Water Utility Authority has nothing to do with the tree out, true-ups, or the balancing of the bills. It should have said North Florida Mega Industrial Park. And the clean copy that Ellen circulated this morning did fix those typos. And they were just Scrivener errors. So many initials out there, you know, people get them confused. Nobody noticed it. None of the attorneys noticed it. Nobody noticed it. But we did finally see it. Anyway, so this is an agreement. This was prepared with the county, the city of Lake City, and the regional utility authority. All the attorneys were in the room. We all worked together with the utility departments and the managers to work out the terms of this agreement. Under this agreement, the city will operate our wastewater treatment plant. They will cover all the costs and expenses of operating our wastewater treatment plant. They will provide the operators. We will still have the responsibility for maintaining the spray field. And at the end of the day, they're going to start by seeding the plant. In about six months, once the plant stabilizes, then they'll begin, six months to a year, introducing the leachate. And then the leachate comes septic and everything else. But that, you have to do this initial startup period first. So, they're talking about seeding the plant next week or the week after. At the end of the day, every quarter, we're going to have an accountant, independent accountant, true up the books. So we know what it costs to operate this plant. And on a pro rata share, we will have, share our costs and they'll show their costs. So the cost of operating this plant will be borne by both the city and the county. So it'll take that, some of that burden off of us. They're going to give us, give the plant the revenues from the flow that they divert to us. Obviously, we're paying for our leachate at a set rate that's in the contract. And like I said, we true it up every quarter and every annually just to make sure everybody's books are the same. It's a two-year contract. At the end of two years, then this board can decide, do we want to give the plant to the utility authority? Do we want to give the plant to the city? Do we want to continue to operate ourselves? That'll be your decision. At the end of this contract, it's a twenty-four month contract. Any question?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Long time in the work.
So next is the annexation of county property. We told the city we would revisit the annexation issue. Once we got this issue resolved, they have come back and said they still want to annex the property that the county owns off of County Road one hundred. And they're still very much interested. And they said they would install master meters on the water line on U S ninety. Having said that, there's been a change to the property, as you can see. That piece that's missing is the piece that you did an economic development agreement with cold, with a cold storage facility. And so it's no longer part of our property. We can't voluntarily annex somebody else's property. If they never build, we'll get it back, but we can't voluntarily annex that. I've informed the city of that. They understand that. They'll talk to the owners of that property about annexation. Again, the city wants to annex this so that they can eventually get to the airport and annex the airport. Our recommendation is upon the installation of the master meter on ninety, we proceed with voluntary annexation.
David is, where's Hunter Panels in this discussion?
Hunter Panels is the big white box.
Right. But I mean, they're already annexed, is that correct?
They are not.
They are not.
They are in the county.
Okay.
But again, if the city wanted to annex them, they would have to approach Hunter Panels on their own.
All right. Any questions? Recommended motion, pull it up.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a second.
Yeah, I think Joel had commented.
For the clerk's purposes, is that motion subject to the installation of the master meter on ninety?
Yeah.
Okay.
You good? Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
So, so they are, if we agree to the annexation, they, that includes them agreeing to the master meter?
Yep. We will not proceed with voluntarily annexing the property based on this motion until after the master meter is installed.
Good.
Is that correct, Joel?
That is, that's my understanding of the motion, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, okay. Good plan.
So the next thing is Budget Amendment twenty-five twenty-three, Lake City Emergency Home Repair. A couple of meetings ago, the city of Lake City adopted an ordinance or a resolution or whatever, what was it? A Resolution twenty-five oh oh four, where they gave us two hundred thousand dollars more for the emergency home repair project in the city. That should cover the four remaining houses that were inspected, but we ran out of money and were never able to fix them. So there's four houses left on the list of the original list of eligible houses. This would close that out. And we're asking for you to, they've given us, they've actually written the check to us already. But until the board appropriates the money and approves the money, we can't move forward.
All right. Motion.
I approve Budget Amendment twenty-five twenty-three.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next one is the Work-Based Learning Memorandum of Understanding with the school district. School district is asking for a memorandum of understanding with the county to work with them on their, what they call work-based learning. Basically, it's apprenticeships, internships, job shadowing to help their students learn job skills in the workplace. It's not any money exchanging. It's a memorandum of understanding. It's not really a interlocal agreement. It's just a memorandum of understanding, but it says basically, if we've got opportunities, we'll work with them and they'll provide the students and they'll provide the labor. She did mention in her email that there's one project they would like to get started on, which is called, can I say that in here? Fly Day Fridays? What the Fly Day Fridays is, is her students would come out and work with Lawrence Wilson to learn how to use drones, operate drones, and they'll go and inspect our towers and map out our towers where the antennas are and all the fun stuff. We get to keep the data. It helps us in terms of after a wind event, when we have to verify that the antennas weren't damaged on our public safety system. Rather than hiring somebody to climb the tower, we can get with the school district and they can fly the drones with really good cameras on it and inspect the tower. And then if there is a problem, we'll hire somebody to climb it. But it saves us an extra tower climb and it gives Lawrence more data.
Okay. Any questions?
Just wondering if they can work a sandbag feeling operation.
You could.
Could you use them out there, Kirby?
And before you vote, Jennifer wanted to bring up one thing.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll be brief. If you will recall, back in October, we had scheduled with Angela Kopic and Tiara Arline a tour of the C T E facilities at the high school. The storms that came through delayed that. We've now rescheduled that. So, kind of tagging along with the M O U here with the work-based learning, I'd like to invite you to join us for a tour of the C T E programs at the high school on the twenty-first of this month, ten a.m. I'll send out a calendar invite just so you have it. But they're really excited to show the, the progress and the improvements that they made in that program. And the, the students are excited to share what they're learning and how they're learning it, and how that correlates with the business and industry that we're talking to now. So just wanted to take a, a moment this morning to invite you to that, let you know I'll be sending you an invite. If you have any questions, please let me know. But I really hope you can attend.
All right. Seek a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next one is Resolution number twenty twenty-five R oh five. It's a request for C O P C N, Certificate of Public Need and Necessity. Basically, it allows somebody to run an ambulance service. The H C A Florida wants to run an ambulance service between the Live Oak Emergency Center, the H C A Florida Lake City Hospital, and the H C A North Central Florida Hospital. So it would strictly be internal transports among the H C A facilities in Swan Lake County, our county, and the hospital in Gainesville.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Economic Development Advisory Board, you have two vacancies on the board. You have three applicants. We're requesting that you appoint two of them to the board. You will have additional vacancies in the near future as we start enforcing the policy of you can only be on there two terms, then you have to sit out a term.
All right.
So, question time?
Go ahead, sir.
So, what are the, what are the qualifications for this board, for this member to be on this board, these two members?
You have to appoint them.
She's got to appoint them. That's it. So what will they be doing exactly? Just kind of break it down for us, if you can.
On the Economic Development Advisory Board, anytime there is anybody who requests an incentive, an economic incentive, or industries that want to come to Columbia County, that board basically vets them and then makes a recommendation to this board, whether to give them incentive, not give them incentive, to establish an incentive or not establish an incentive. They advise you on what these, vetting these clients are.
Okay. All right. So they need to be knowledgeable and they need to have kind of a, a good mindset for the future of Columbia County, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And for instance, one of the issues we had was these clients come into town. There's nobody on the school board, on the E D A B, so there's nobody on the school board to answer their questions of, well, how good are the schools? So that was one reason why Ms. Kopic applied for the job.
Right.
Because she could represent the school board in these meetings. I think Joel wants to say something.
You know, I've worked with the E D A B for many years. You really want to look for a good diversity of your stakeholders. We actually have carved out certain seats for certain agencies. Mr. Kraus is correct. It'd be nice to have somebody from the school board there. We haven't historically. But those people kind of do the heavy lifting when it comes to these economic development projects. There's also a lot of confidentiality that kick in, and they sort of help us respect that at a higher level. The meetings are still public, but in terms of our legwork that, that Jennifer does and things like that. So these folks need to have a good base of experience. They need to come from different places in the community so they bring that stakeholder perspective to those meetings. I know we always get questions we never anticipated because of the diversity of the people that sit on that board. So you want to maintain that to the best of your ability.
Right, right.
I'll make a motion.
I, I was.
You answered a question.
Yeah, I answered a question. Yeah, I was gonna say if you, I can make a motion, you can make whichever one.
I was going, I'm the chairman of that committee, so I was gonna make a motion that we appoint Ron Williams and Angela Kopic to the.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Aye. Good. Take a vote. Where we go? You vote.
Did it pass?
Was it four one? What was it?
I didn't hear anybody.
I didn't vote.
You didn't vote at all?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to approve it.
Okay. I didn't.
So you're nay?
Nay.
You're nay?
Yeah.
I'm nay.
When abstention counts.
I'm nay, yeah.
Well, you can't abstain. So if you, yeah, so it doesn't automatically, you have to actually vote under law. So, are you voting no, Commissioner Phillips?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Clark, what do we have then? Is that a two, three vote? So that motion fails. So you'll need to seek another motion.
Another motion?
Another motion. So, I make a motion, we approve, or we go forward with Angela Kopic and Jeff Simmons on this.
I'll second that one.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
So Madam Clark, that was five zero for that motion? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have two more additions. One is a amendment to the Housing C D B G grant that we have with the Department of Commerce Department. We are doing modification number two to this grant. And basically, our modification is to extend it one year. That specifically runs then to January thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. We should have all the houses completed by then. And then the other part of the modification is that should it expire before this comes, because it's near the end of the expiration date, they're going to they're going to ignore that and consider it reinstated so it was never an end of service. Those are the two modifications in the agreement, we actually have a form, they filled it out and sent it to us. So I'm asking you for approval of modification number two to the sub-grant agreement between the Department of Commerce and Columbia County.
Seek a motion.
I move that we appoint two of them.
No, this is wrong. That's a different one, I forgot that one. So does anybody want to modify this agreement so we can finish the house?
I make a motion.
So moved.
To modi- Go ahead, you're good, Rock.
Yeah, I get so moved.
I take Rocky's motion and I'm a second.
I know, I'm the chair, I hate that we wouldn't make the motion.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah. So.
But thank you. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next one that I ask to be added to the agenda is the ending of the local state of emergency. Having your packet draft resolution, which should be twenty-twenty-five oh six, I believe, is that right, Joel?
That's correct.
And basically, did you need us to read it into the record or just have them vote on it? You need to do it on a roll call basis.
Get right ahead, Joe.
Columbia County Board of County Commissioners Resolution number twenty-two-five R dash zero-six, a resolution of the Columbia County Florida Board of County Commissioners rescinding twenty-twenty-four states of emergency for Hurricanes Debbie, Helene and Milton. Whereas Columbia County entered into three states of emergency during the twenty-twenty-four calendar year to deal with impacts from three separate hurricanes. Whereas Columbia County no longer faces threats or damages and the performance of public work for the county's safety has been completed. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida in a regular session duly assembled the sixth day of February twenty-twenty-five, that the following resolution numbers are rescinded. Hurricane Debbie, twenty-twenty-four R dash twenty-eight, executed on August second, twenty-twenty-four. Hurricane Helene, twenty-twenty-four R dash forty-three, executed on September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four. Hurricane Milton, twenty-twenty-four R dash forty-eight, executed on October ninth, twenty-twenty-four. I need to know which commissioner will move for adoption so I can fill that in, which commissioner seconds, and then Mr. Chair will need a roll call vote.
Go on.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you.
Roll call, ma'am.
Commissioner Feden Parnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rocky Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett Phillips?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tim Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I may have a, some discretion, in your package you'll see there was a agenda item that I did not do as an addition because technically it doesn't really require a vote, it's, you have a vacancy on the north central Florida regional plannings, lower, middle and lower Swanee River and Wichita La Hoochie River Caspores that the chair will need to appoint. So at some point, the chair needs to appoint somebody.
What is this?
It is the middle and lower Swanee River and Wichita La Hoochie, is that how it's pronounced?
Is that the board of river caspors?
That's the board that meets on a regional basis that talks about Valdosta dumping sewage in our river.
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
And the former person that was on it is no longer on the board, so we need to appoint somebody. So if anybody's interested, if you could get with the commissioner or the chair.
Okay.
And he can then appoint that person.
Mr. Chair, if I could make a recommendation, one of your folks that's with the utility would, would be a natural fit for this because there is some overlap there.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, we'll appoint Mr. Ford.
Okay. And again, it didn't require a vote, so that's why I didn't add it to the agenda. Thank you guys very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, moving along. Open and public comments, three-minute limit, please. Anybody? Go right ahead, sir. Please state your name for the clerk, address, please. I can relate.
I'm Wayne Witten, President of the Mikeville Community Center, AKA Home Demonstration Center. And I'm here at, my address is five-three-six Southwest Jim Ward Street, Fort White. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I know my three minutes is counting, but I'm going to take a minute of it to announce something that unfortunately Everett and Rocky both knows. We lost a pillar of our community last week, Wayne Mosley passed away, he's member of our board. I don't know what else to say. Grew up with Wayne, my, my neighbor. He is everything this county could ever want. And I should have mentioned this when we had the FFAers here because nineteen sixty-five-nine, when I graduated from Fort White, I was president of FFA Club and Wayne was just joining, his brothers before him, but Wayne was just coming on board. Now, who would have ever, ever would have thought of all the future farmers? Well, they had one in that group that is by far, I, I think if not the largest farmer in this county, he's close to it with thousands of acres.
Ain't nobody ever grown a farm no more than him, I guarantee.
And you know, last April, I'm taking my time here a little bit, last April I met with you all and that night you were, were given the award proclamation for the Farmer of the Year. And I'm sitting there thinking, I wonder if Wayne ever got this award? Probably didn't. But we'll, I just had to put that out this morning, again, he's, there's only one Wayne and the sheriff should have had him as a deputy because Wayne with his cowboy hat and his truck rode the roads on the half of the south county down here, so much so that you can always say, anybody seen Wayne lately? He said, no, but if you wait five minutes, he's going to come by. He didn't- You know, seriously, if, if there's any way something future you guys could just mention him in his honor. He, he, we were planning our next fish fry, excuse me, our next fish fry at his barns around the corner from the clubhouse three weeks ago, and we said, hey, what, he says, I bet I must have this one at the, at the Mikeville clubhouse. Said, good idea, Wayne. So we're going to have that fish fry and certainly mention him there.
He would have been missed, but if you would, what you got here now?
But here, in my two minutes and counting, I'm just following up on the letter that I hope each of you have had a chance to take a look at. A little unusual request here this morning, I'm not coming for immediate money, but I'm asking your support for a grant, they were going for Clay Electric and their operation roundup. We think we've got a good case to be made to support our authority and my time just expired. I appreciate your support on that and consideration for having, putting five thousand dollars aside here until we hear so what we might be able to, to finish this thing off. And she, she just left. The one, one thing in this was that we were looking for them to give us some money for the high school students to support our idea to have a extension of the county libraries, a resource center out there. And again, as part of the project, should have mentioned that to the school board folks. Thank you, appreciate you. All we're looking for is just, if I could just reference in our application that the county supports what we're about.
I don't think that's a problem to you yet.
Well, Joe, have them, give us some history on the vetting of this, if you don't mind, please.
Yes, sir, thank you.
My, my understanding, this is the, you're just looking to make a grant application.
Yeah, he gets lots of support from the county for their grant application.
With Clay Electric? I mean, that's a discretionary issue for you guys. He's not asking for any money.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a support, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're asking for support of this board for y'all to apply for this grant and that's it.
It's in for the nature's grant, obviously, we're, we're telling you what it is that we're going to be asking them for and basically, a good bit of money, we asked for fifteen thousand dollars, we don't know if we can get it, we might get some or not. But that we're going to find is going to be to improvements that so much otherwise would be kind of coming to you, you all.
How, how was that? Go back to the podium if you would, because I'll go ahead and get this resolved real quick. How? Because we got a question here.
Sure.
How is that going to come back to us? Because it's my understanding and all the information that I've been fed, that y'all rejected this to be a public, that go down the road of a public community center.
Abs- absolutely.
Absolutely, you did reject it.
We, we had a discussion and David and Joel can, can echo that last year about this time, we came and discussed, should we want it, we were, we're willing, ready to give the, the old clubhouse and property to the county to be joined the rest of them. After a bit of discussion, it was recommended that we, for now, and our board approved it, to go ahead and keep it, private if you would, but we would agree to, to operate it within the same policy guidelines as the rest of the community centers, and we've been doing that.
But, but if I understand you right this morning, you're just asking for a support letter for the grant you're applying for?
They're going to need a letter on this, if, if I can get a, yeah, you support it. But, but in all honesty though, we, we do, we are going to need special, if we forget this, to do what we need, we do, we're going to need a little bit more funding on the back end. And the main thing is, is that we're asking on that end, is the idea to try to see if it works to have not only our community center, but one of the other, of the others as well. You only got two libraries and they're both right here in Lake City. I'm sorry, three, two here in Lake City, one in Fort White. That doesn't serve the communities like the community centers do. We'd like to try a pilot program out at our place and see if, if that would be something that could be, if it works, maybe extend to the others.
I, I don't, I don't see a problem personally with just giving you a letter of support, we support this group, Mikeville, whatever your corporation is, to apply for a grant. But you, you, you made a point there, and I just wanted to clarify that. You said eventually it's coming back to us, that's not been agreed upon on this board. And I just want to make that clear.
I understand, sir.
You know, because, but, and I'll leave it at that, yeah, but, but. Thank you. But, okay, what's the recommendation of the board?
Yeah, I, I support giving them a letter of support for the grant. Need a motion for that?
Got a motion and a second.
I think a consensus would be fine.
Consensus, okay.
Unless there's an objection from any board member, you can view that as consensus.
Okay. Everybody good? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witten.
Public comments, anybody else?
Morning. My name is Rand Taylor, nine seventy-four, Southeast Adam Street. This is a public service announcement for the taxpayers of this county. Mr. Kraus and Mr. Phillips are well aware of this problem that's been persisting since September first of twenty-twenty-one was when the owner of the property, who was absent, got his first letter of violation. This problem has gotten bigger and bigger, it's a health hazard. The neighbors built unnatural, what do you want to call it? Tree debris. Things were, animals that carry diseases have refuge. And there was an outbreak of rabies in southeast part of the city of Latua this summer. I have three rescue dogs there. I have had numerous encounters with cats, feral cats, by the way. And for some reason, the guy that owns this property next door, who has been hauled into court for his violations, for some reason, he believes he can go back and keep doing what he has been doing because the codes hasn't been adhered to ever since he got that warning. As a matter of fact, Mr. Kraus has been down there twice, and I believe was Jennifer both times, and found violations. And Mr. Phillips is down there, there's weeds that were, if there were gutters on the house, they would be that high. They've seen Mr. Phillips and Kraus, and I believe Mr. Kraus has seen it too, that there's weeds in the back at my fence that go over the top of my four-board fence. And for some reason, code enforcement doesn't want to enforce it. For some reason, this guy that owns this property isn't the least bit afraid of being hauled into court again. One of your employees, and Mr. Kraus knows who it is, has a hard time with the truth when it comes to communicating with Mr. Kraus. And I had asked him, I says, well, now that you know what he'll lie to you about, Mr. Kraus, what won't he lie to you about? So I invite you guys to go to look at nine-point-two-four, nine-point-two-four-point-four, that's the code. And there are sections above and below that. I don't know if, if I can finish or not, I saw the clock ran out.
Wrap it up, please, yes, go ahead.
So there are sections above and below that, nine-point-two-four-point-four, there pertain to it. Mr. Kraus has it, I sent it to him, and he immediately sent it to Mr. Cruz. And then I found more snakes underneath the rocks.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to have to cede you, but David, this is a, it's, it's, it's a common problem we seem to have with code enforcement. I realize that we've got laws and what have you to forward. I'm not saying, I, I don't know nothing about this incident, but assuredly, I don't know how long this has been going on, but I would just ask as one commissioner of five, that, you know, come to some type of resolution, in and out, whatever, if this went through the proceedings, he needs to be made aware of that. But it sounds like maybe he doesn't understand, none of it, but I'm just saying. You'd have to see, sir.
I'd invite all of you commissioners to come down, I suggested it to Mr. Kraus, that he take someone down there with Jennifer in nine-point-two-four-point-four and look at the property.
Okay.
So we have referred this to code enforcement numerous times. Mr. Taylor and I have spoken numerous times for probably about a year or so. It did at one point go to the magistrate's office, and the magistrate dealt with it. But he has filed complaints numerous times, we've turned him into code enforcement. I can't supplement my judgment for code enforcement, it really is a code enforcement call. Your code enforcement officers feel that there is no violation of the code.
Yeah. This has been called upon violation, it has gone to the magistrate. The magistrate has entered an order. This is an argument that there is a repeat violation. Based on the order of the magistrate, your code enforcement officers are going down there examining the premises and saying, based on the order of the magistrate, is this a repeat violation? And they have uniformly found it is not.
Okay.
Now, we're very sensitive about how we do code enforcement in Columbia County. And the board has always taken this position, if you want to change it, that's fine, but it is complaint-based and we insulate our code enforcement officers from any influence. We don't want commissioners influencing it, we don't want the county manager influencing it, we try to insulate. That's why you have a magistrate. Magistrate holds y'all's authority until such time as it gets appealed or whatever the case may be. We work really, really hard to maintain that. I meet with code enforcement once every other month just for them to show me their cases and say, this is our evidence, this is what presented to the board. I say, go ahead, right? We, that's, that's all the involvement I have in it because we're trying really hard. Now, I will say, in the ten years I've been county attorney, our code enforcement is firing on all cylinders in ways I haven't seen before. It is not unusual to have a neighbor who is incredibly frustrated that what he views as a violation was not viewed by the magistrate as a violation. But that's why you have the magistrate, you have to allow him to do his job. Nine-point-two-four-point-four, I'm very familiar with it. We do not typically go to the, to the point of saying overgrown weeds are a problem. Guys, if you say overgrown weeds are a problem, you're going to have nothing but overgrown weed cases, wall-to-wall, every week for as long as you can imagine, because we have lots and lots of people who don't want to cut that down. And we've not gotten into that, that, that's kind of a Latua County stuff, right? Like you got to mow your lawn to three inches tall, da-da-da. You've never done that, now you can. It's my obligation to tell you, you can adopt that code. You can say, hey, we're going to require if you have a residential unit, you have to keep the front yard mowed. Your code doesn't say that. Your code says you can't have overgrowth, placement of dead trees, trash, garbage, weeds, et cetera, to the point it becomes what we call noxious, right? And Mr. Taylor is arguing that these are in fact noxious. Code enforcement doesn't agree, they've gone and looked, they don't agree with his assessment, that's pretty much where it ends for us. We can go and address it, we could talk about the code itself, but it sits where it sits, it is what it is.
Well, I felt sure, Joe, that this amount of time, it definitely went to magistrate, and you've answered my question, so.
Yes, and again, to reiterate for each of the commissioners, code enforcement is receptive to taking calls from you, they're receptive to keeping you briefed. Please, again, in the interest of complying with the charter, do not instruct them to do anything. You are free to file your own complaints. Mr. Parnell, you may not know this yet because you're fairly new. Commissioner Hollingsworth has done this before. When he has a constituent who complains to a point where it bothers him, he'll initiate a complaint. I think you guys have initiated complaints. So we have processes and we do everything we can to process this. We have really good records, you're always welcome to review them, anybody's welcome to review those investigation records as soon as they're available, which is typically after we bring it to the magistrate. But, you know, we try really hard to have a good process. It is absolutely not perfect, the justice system isn't perfect either. But in terms of Mr. Taylor's concerns, believe me, they have been heard, they have been reviewed, they have been vetted. It just is what it is, right?
So you're actually telling Mr. Taylor that this man is not in violation?
Code enforcement has made that determination. Based on, again, based on a prior order of the magistrate when this violation did go to the magistrate. So it's not like it's a brand new thing where they've come out and they've just said nothing. There's been repeated visits. Again, I understand Mr. Kraus may have gone. If he'd asked me first, I'd have told him not to. Because again, your code enforcement officers have been charged by you to do that work under your code. So we have to respect those lines.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody else with a three minute comment? Seeing none. Steph, any comments?
No, sir.
David, you're gonna be gone next week, right?
I will be out of town next week and then when we come back, there's a trip to DC to meet our senators and legislators.
Okay. Any other updates, David, before you skip the country?
Nope.
Okay.